Good evening and welcome to the public hearing of the Livingston Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today is April 10th, 2025. If you're an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for that grant of the variance exists and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you will require a formal vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four members to grant that variance. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance and that has been granted, you too may appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of the notice of decision. If you file an appeal, I ask that you provide, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint to the Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger and West Essex Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or to make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you would like to address the board, please come to the front and use the microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. We will now call the roll. Mr. Kenia?
Mr. Kenia. Yeah, Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mr. Shies out. Mr. Sherman.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Weisman.
Here.
Ms. Khan.
Here.
Mr. Beer.
Here.
Yeah, Coram.
Thank you. Just a quick piece of housekeeping. If you are here for the minor subdivision at 41 and 51 Overlook Road, that has been adjourned to the planning board. It was not our jurisdiction, so that's off tonight's agenda. Okay, if you'd like to call the first applicant.
Yes. Block 3502, Lot 15, 2 Knowleswood Drive. Applicant number 2025-9-V Joseph and Linda Duker. Applicant seeks approval for a rare one-story addition and second-floor terrace in violation of the following section. 170-99C4 rear yard setback 35 feet required, 27.9 feet proposed, 7.1 feet variance requested.
Good evening. How are you? Sorry to keep everyone waiting for a little bit before. Yep. You want to swear them in?
All right, why don't we have your names before we swear your names?
My name is John Brower, B-R-O-W-E-R.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Linda Duker, D-U-K-E-R.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Now, sir, you're testifying as a, as an expert?
Yes.
Architect?
Architect.
Okay, can we just have your qualifications on the record briefly?
Yep. Graduate of NJIT in 1992, been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1998. I'm a principal partner in the firm of Dugoss and Brower Architects since 1998, and I am the architect of record for this project.
I assume your licenses are currently in good standing?
Yes.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture.
Okay. I'll just give you a quick overview of the project. We are in the R4 zone. The minimum rear yard setback is 35 feet required. Presently, we're at 41.1 feet, and we're proposing 27.9 feet for a requested variance of 7.1 feet. My clients propose to construct a one-story rear addition with an open terrace above as part of an alteration to the ground floor to create a separate living area for use by the applicants, Joseph and Linda Duker. The upper level of the home will be occupied by their son and daughter-in-law. Joseph Duker is a retired police officer who is handicapped, and it's very difficult for him to come and go with the home configured as it currently is. The ground floor living arrangements will make it easier for daily living for the Dukers as doors will be larger, bathroom access will be easier, and egress out of the home will be much safer at ground level. Regarding the C1 hardships, there's no site-related hardships other than the limitations of the configuration of the existing home and the C2 positive criteria. The proposed addition is slightly larger in size to the area of the existing deck that, with a space constructed below that. As noted in the engineering report, there is an increase in lot coverage mainly due to the proposed widened driveway, but the project does not require any variances for lot coverage. We feel that these factors all contribute to the fact that this proposed project will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the local ordinance. That's it.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
You plan to build any more deck or are you removing the deck totally?
The existing deck is going to be removed. The new, the new addition would be constructed, and above that would be another terrace, which would be basically similar to what they have now. Thank you.
In that same location, so where the deck is underneath, that's where the addition will go, and then right on top of that will be?
Essentially, that's a, when you look at the existing deck that's back there now, the proposed addition is slightly larger than that, but from a visual standpoint, that's essentially where the addition will be.
So, I mean, just as it looks like it'll go out like another six feet, is that?
What, excuse me?
The addition will go out like another six feet from where it is now, like?
I'm not sure what the exact dimension is. There's a 7.1-foot variance requested, but that's only based off of the location of the existing corner of the existing house. If you look at the cover sheet, that has a side-by-side comparison of where the existing deck is and where the proposed addition is.
Just a question, how far does it go to, there's a shed in the back, right? On the left-hand side, there's a shed?
Yes. How much clearance is there between the?
And that's the, yeah, the clearance between the shed and the addition?
10.2 feet.
It's more than 10 feet.
Okay. Okay.
So we do maintain that minimum clearance between the, between the structures?
Anybody else have any questions on board? Please.
I just wanted to know, because I'm looking at the plans, versus, how many, how many feet would you estimate? It sounds like the addition is a few feet more than where the deck is now?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
It's like around three feet, I'm guessing?
Give or take, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on the board? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public want to make any statements regarding this application? Does anybody on the board want to make any statements regarding this application?
Yeah, I would just note, because it wasn't mentioned, that this is a corner lot. It does seem, this is much narrower than, than typical, as well as it being that this is the rear lot variance, but it's almost like a side, the side of the house. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
Does anybody on the board want to make a motion? Or do you have something else to say?
Yeah, the only other thing I was going to say is like, just due to the lot configuration, I mean, realistically, if the lot was square, I mean, you'd be talking about a couple of feet for a variance, but the topography of that side lot line makes it that you need the seven-foot variance. Otherwise, it would be minimal.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
You're up.
Okay, Mr. Kenia, yes. Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Kenia, to call the second one?
Yep. It's okay, the second application. Block 1404, Lot 7, 48 Dorothy Avenue. Application number 2025-10-V Sergey Samsonik. Application seeks approval for the second-floor addition in violation of the following section. 170-87BB4 habitable floor area, 3220 square feet allowed, 3701 square feet proposed, 481, 481 square feet variance requested.
All right, can you please raise your right hands? All right. Do you swear from tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Can you individually please state and spell your names?
Sergey Samsonik.
Can you just spell your name?
S-E-R-G-Y.
Okay. And ma'am?
Svetlana Samsonik. S-V-E-T-L-A-N-A.
Okay. And you are the owners of the property, 48 Dorothy Avenue?
This is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, the floor is yours. Tell us what you're doing.
Our house is an older building, and it lacks such master bedroom and master, master bathroom. So this is the purpose of this addition.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry, I'm all the way over here, so it's a little tougher for me.
Yes. Sorry about this. As I said, our house is an older construction. It lacks master bedroom and master bathroom, and this is the main purpose of doing this addition, to introduce this new space, which is common in all modern buildings. We have relatively large properties. We are asking only for one variance. We are under 30% habitable area data, relevant metric, which is, which is used. So, yeah, we believe that our house will look better and will improve appearance of the whole neighborhood. Okay?
And I will be happy.
I have some questions. So, it looks to me on the picture, right, when I drove by? So the house, this was the original house, and this was, this was added on? Yes. Right? And then, it's, it's, I mean, it's a lot, it's a big house, right? So, explain to me, well, explain to me exactly what you want to do. So do you want to fill this barden up here?
Yes, exactly. Current, it looks like a saddle or something, which is not really aesthetic, so yes. Typically, additions to split levels is adding the floor above this middle part, and this is what we're about to do. Correct.
But you want to put almost like a 600-square-foot addition on to the house?
It's more like 500, I think.
Right, now, 3100, they want to go to 3700.
500 totally. Yes, 500 square feet about.
481 square feet.
481, five, almost 500 square feet. Okay.
Yeah, 481.
Just, just to have the one level with one bedroom, bathroom, separate from, from the others.
Your lot is oversized for an R4, but it's not, it's not a lot that can really accommodate a 3700-square-foot home.
We are still under 30%, which is, which is required ratio between lot area and total habitable area.
Yeah, I know, that's too bad.
So, the, you're making an addition in the middle part of the home, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there, have you looked at a reconfiguration of the floor plan that may not yield as much of a square, larger square footage as an alternative to going over the requirement? You understand what I mean?
Yes.
Have you looked, have you looked at reconfiguring the home in order to be, meet the standard?
Yes, we absolutely looked at it. That would be, yes. It, it's very difficult in the older part of the house. The typical layout has bedrooms tied one to another, and there is no real space for master bedroom. Cutting, we were considering reducing bedrooms, but that would yield small and barely habitable bedrooms, and that will, will not be noticeable improvement. Yes, we can get room with master bedroom, which we want, but it will not be the size or shape or configuration of what can be, can be achieved with building the addition.
So basically, we would lose one room totally if we would make the bedroom, bathroom, walk-in closet together, and then we, we just, we are losing one room in this case. We will stay on the same floor, just try to reconfigure.
I think we hear what you're saying. Yeah. But I think our problem as a board is the massing of this house. Once the construction is completed, it'll, it's going to be a huge house, and I think the massing of the house is going to be so large for the size of the property that it's on. And as our attorney pointed out, perhaps there's a way to go back and look at the entire home and see if it can be reconfigured, because to add on 500 square feet, and, I mean, we look at the drawings, it's going to be huge. And again, I'm not sure that the size of your property can accommodate a house of that size.
We're not extending it, I mean, we're not expanding it sideways.
Well, it's pretty long now. I mean, it's a pretty big house now. It's a pretty big house now.
We're not extending this, right? We're just adding on the top.
But it would be, it would be the largest house in, on the block by far. It would be like the largest house.
Which makes it good for the neighborhood, because it's good to be in a neighborhood where there are big and possibly more expensive houses.
I hear what you're saying, but it also has to fit on the size of the lot. And according to how we're looking at it, by putting on this extra 500 square feet, the house will be enormous, and we have to look at that as a whole. And I hear what you're saying about the, you know, way to get from one place to another and the master bedroom and the bathroom. We hear that, but we have to look at the house in its entirety, and we have to see, you know, look at the massing, and that's, I think?
But if you look at the house right now, it's looks strange, right? From even the, from aesthetical point of view, because it's, it's, it's a hole in the middle, and again, we are not using the more space on, on the ground, right? We just want to make it look like a house, not like a hole in the middle at the same time.
Part of the problem is, is no, we don't have a hardship to, you need to have a hardship generally. So we're trying to figure out how to, you know, you have an oversized lot, and you're going over on the allowable area. So, that's what we're struggling with. So normally, we need, we need, we need, we need a rationale. I mean, obviously, everyone wants to have whatever they want for the house, but we need a legal rationale to help push these things through. And so I think that's what we're starting to struggle with. Feel free to chime in and?
No, I, I was going to agree. I mean, yeah, if you're looking at the, you know, the benefits versus the detriments, I mean, yes, the, having a house that size in the, in that area, it would be oversized compared to the other neighboring houses. It then leads to the other neighbors wanting to expand and put even larger houses, and then making this affect the entire neighborhood. I mean, it's not, it's not the right-size house for that size lot.
But what about the neighbors? We have a few new houses, which are huge, only space very small. It's, I mean, even smaller than ours.
So we look at every application as its own, right? Every application is in a silo. We don't, we look at every application because each size, each property is different, each hardship is different, and we can't take the same, you know, the law is the law, but we can also look at things and, you know, and not?
We're talking about our street, right? So we have a house across of us, which new house, which is big. There is another house, it's also just built, and the size of the lot not bigger than ours. It's a huge house.
We are not, we are not starting this trend.
So you're in, you're in, excuse me, you're in the R4?
Yes, we didn't start, like, our house wouldn't be the biggest house.
Okay. You're in the R4 zone, right? You're in the R4 zone. And in the R4 zone, the minimum lot area was 9375. You're higher than that, you're 12,500. The next, just the next, the next size up is the R3, which is 15,000, right? So you're sort of in between an R4 and an R3, but the size house that you want to build is even larger than what you would build in an R3. It's a very large house for the size of property, for the piece of property that you have.
What about other houses, which are the same big, just across us? Just the same area, the same?
I hear what you're saying.
You understand?
You just have to, let, let me, let me just, let me explain this. The board takes every application based on its own merits, right? So I think you heard from the one that just appeared before you, the gentleman that was speaking on behalf of that applicant identified particular issues and unique circumstances that were present with that particular lot and that particular structure to justify the relief sought before the board. So what the board is trying to convey is that there is a question in their mind at this point that the, that there is a justification to approve the variance. And as I asked the question about your alternatives, and you responded back to that, the, as I said, the board is, I know that this board is concerned about, as other commissioners indicated, about massing and about meeting the, the goals of the zoning plan. So I think when you look in terms of your own application here, you have to say what unique circumstances are present for you that make this necessary to get your relief from the zone. Whether you have those or not, that's up to you. I'm just saying that that's the standard the board has to apply. So just so you understand, that's why the board is asking questions like that. Despite what other people have done or what other houses look like, really, the, the important factor is what are you doing on your lot? So just something to keep in mind. You, 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 all right, I'm, I'm sorry, Chair, you want, you have, you have other board members that may want to say something. I'll hold.
Does anybody for this moment have any questions or comments along the way on this application?
I just want to, if I may.
Please, go ahead. We are here for you, we're just, but we, you know, we have a legal parameters, and we have to, you know?
Yes, yes. So, when we are talking about a house being massive, it is definitely, if you look at the square footage, yes, it's, it's big, but if, it's like large number. But if you look at the house, how it is, how it looks like now, and how the proposed structure should look, there will be not so much increase in how massive the house look like, because currently, the house, as you see on the photo, looks like two bigger parts of the structure with a smaller structure in the middle. By extending the structure in the middle, we are not increasing visually, we are not increasing so much appearance of the house as the number of square footage may, may, may suggest. This is, this is our argument, basically. So we'll, we'll, we'll look, this will look, this will make neighborhood look better, and this, this is for common good of everybody in, in the neighborhood and in, in the township.
Understood, thank you. So, I mean, I, I think we clearly hear what you, what you're saying, and we understand what you're saying surely, but I mean, part of it goes to the length of the house, which is, you know, 75 feet plus or minus 76 feet, whatever it is in length. So I'm, I'm hearing a lot of uncomfortableness trying to figure out how to proceed with this application. Maybe you could talk to your architect to see what he could do if you want to, you want to try to come back, because I'm not sure if you're going to have all the votes you need, from what I'm hearing. So I don't want to, if you, if you want to go forward with a vote, we could do that. And if it go, if it doesn't pass, you'd have to come back with something substantially
And if it go, if it doesn't pass, you'd have to come back with something substantially different. How that's defined, I can't really tell you because every house is on its own, so there's no definition of that. But if you want to adjourn and talk to your professionals and see what they can do to help you out or maybe come and help explain things through for us, that might be a better path for you, I think. Any thoughts?
I don't see how much we can improve in terms of what we want to do. If you're talking about finding some reasoning to do it other than what was, what we tried to present today, I'm just not sure how to...
So what can the architect propose differently instead of building on the top of this, like, the hole between those structures, right?
Well, we can't redesign the house for you.
We do understand that, right?
Exactly. But it wasn't reason.
Okay, so let me, let me just...
We tried to reconstruct what we had. It doesn't work.
Let me just, let me just say this. I, I think that in these type of situations, you, you've heard some commentary from the board and some friendly input from the board chairman about what are your options at this point. The board can proceed to a vote tonight. If the board votes tonight and denies you the relief you're requesting, you cannot come back to the board and say, "We want you to vote again." That's not how this works. Once you, once you proceed and you show it and the board votes it down, you would have to come back with something, as the chairman indicated, is substantially different. And Chairman's right, what's substantially different is somewhat in the mind of the beholder, but reducing something by five feet or 10 feet is not substantially different. So what the, what the friendly suggestion is, is that perhaps if your architect can look at this and maybe it remains the same, maybe it's different. I don't know. But bring back the comments from the board to your architect. The architect may take those and may make changes. He, they may not make any changes. But perhaps if the architect then comes back with you at a future board meeting and the architect may be, provide expert testimony as the gentleman before you, before you were on, you saw, he provided it as an expert. And at that point, perhaps, I'm not saying it will, but that would be additional testimony that you could present on your behalf at that point. So it's, it's your application. You can say to the board, "Please proceed." Or you can say to the board, "Okay, we'll take the commentary back. We'll take a look at it. And at the next board meeting, we can either proceed with the way you have it or maybe you've made changes and maybe the architect can come and explain them." But that's completely your call.
We will use your suggestion.
I'm sorry?
We will use your suggestion.
Good, okay. So this will be adjourned. Can we do this at the next, oh, no, it'll be May, May 4th? So it would be the June 11th meeting. Provide, if you have different plans, your architects have them in four weeks before, Catherine? The, if they change the plans, they have to be in four weeks before or...
We need them 10 days.
10 days.
Prior to the meeting, but you also need to go back to the zoning department and resubmit the plans for a re-review.
Right, so there's any changes, right?
They also need 10 days. So just keep in mind, you really need 20 days before a hearing date. So 20 days before June 11th, the zoning off, the zoning department will need your revised plans. If you are indeed revising plans.
So like, May 20th plus or minus, they would need to get in. That gives you a few weeks to get that together and strained out. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
This matter is gonna be held over for the June 11th date.
Correct.
There's no need, you do not need to send out, last time you sent all those letters and you put the notice in newspaper, you don't have to do that again. Okay?
You're, you're covered. All right?
Okay, blocks 6502, Lot 8, 6 Hastings Lane, application number 2025-12-V. Hastings 6 LLC, applicant 6 approval for an addition violation of the following section, 17087 CC1, habitable floor ratio 15% allowed, 17.5% proposed, 2.5% variance requested.
Hi there. How are you? Put your, what, your mic is not on? Therefore, even though you're talking, I can hear you, but we can't hear you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joseph O'Neil, Garofalo O'Neil. I am here on behalf of the Cains, Brent and Jordana, who are immediately behind me for 6 Hastings Lane. I have a couple of witnesses with me this evening, including Mr. McClellan, who is my engineer. He prepared the plot plan that we're gonna be looking at. I'd like to proceed right to get him sworn.
It's good to see you, Mr. O'Neil.
Good to see you, Mr. McClellan, yes.
Do you swear a firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, certainly. My name is Patrick McClellan, M-C-C-L-E-L-L-A-N.
Okay, and we're gonna get Mr. McClellan's qualifications.
He's a professional engineer.
I'm a graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology with 1989 with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. Licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1994. 50% owner of the firm MCB Engineering Associates in Totala since 2002. I've actually had the pleasure to be before this board about 10 years ago, so you probably don't remember me. Had a little bit more hair there. But also approximately 100 land use boards across the northern and central portion of New Jersey. Many of those applications similar to this that we're here for tonight.
And I assume your licenses are currently in good standing?
Yes, sir.
All right. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objection, the witness is accepted as expert in engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All yours.
Can you walk us around the site, please?
Sure. So the property tonight that we're talking about is 6 Hastings Lane. The exhibit on, on, on the TV is showing an existing dwelling that's on site that I understand has been removed as part of this activity. So we had, we had a home on the property. It's gonna be removed and replaced with a new, with a new dwelling. The property itself is in the R1 zone and it is 35,250 square feet, which is conforming with the ordinance. The, the house that's being proposed, along with the associated site improvements, satisfy all but one of the zoning criteria in the R1 zone. The one criteria that we don't satisfy is the habitable floor area ratio. We are under the habitable floor area number, which is 6,200, as you know. We're proposing a house with a floor area of 6,195. But we are, we are over the percentage of 15% that's permitted by zone. So we're here then asking for relief for that. A couple of things about the site I would like to point out that while the house that's proposed is actually bigger than the one that was there, we are actually reducing the impervious cover on the property. The house that's there now has quite a bit of pavement on it, not just in the front yard, but also in the backyard. So this application is, again, while the house is gonna be bigger, it's not gonna be asking for the same impervious cover that was there before. So as a result, we are reducing the impervious cover by 130 square feet. The other upside to that is that, and I know everybody's very sensitive to stormwater management these days, that when, when we can take a pavement area that has the oils in it and potentially has vehicles parking on it and you replace it with a rooftop, in this case, you actually are doing quite a bit to clean the water that runs off that property. So we're getting a, a, a water quality enhancement benefit as a result of the, of the choice of construction that I think is important to point out to the board. We had a letter from your engineer. If I may, I can, there's six comments I'd like to just go through and address for the board, if that's okay?
Yeah, please.
Great. So this is the memo from Rocco Marucci and your assistant town engineer. And the memo is dated February 25 of 2025. The first three comments are just commentary. One, it's acknowledging that the property's not located in a flood zone or riparian buffer. It's also acknowledging that there are no municipal easements on the property and also acknowledging that the property is not listed under your ordinance 24-209, which means it does not have steep slopes to be of concern. So it's a, it's absent of environmental constraints that we see on some of the properties. Item number four is advisory pointing out that if, if approved by this board, we do understand that the applicant has to then file a lot development plan, which gets reviewed by the, by your municipality. The, and we're familiar with that from previous applications. And our plan was, was designed basically to comply with those criteria. So we have addressed all the items we believe that your engineering department will request. And in direct response to this, this comment, again, I just want to emphasize that the total impervious cover has been reduced. So as far as stormwater is concerned, I believe the application for a major storm drain is designed starts at 1,000 new square feet, but we're actually reducing the impervious cover. So our stormwater management is a result of a reduction of the impact to the property. If I go on to page two, the, the fifth bulleted item at the top, talking about new discharge points, including roof leaders, sump pumps, yard inlets, pool pumps, et cetera. The project does illustrate that the roof leaders, we're, we're lucky on this project that we have some storm drain off the front corner of our property. All of our roof leaders are gonna be connected to a, a common leader pipe and connected to that sewer. So we're even getting to take the runoff coming from the roof to, you know, to the municipal system directly so that we don't have any concerns for increasing runoff towards the neighbor's property. And then finally, an inquiry that, saying that there is a pending lot surface drainage permit application for this property currently open with your, with your building department. And just for the record, that application was provided by the previous owner of the property while they were pursuing a development application, but the property has since been sold to our client. That application has no standing and won't be continued, but we will eventually file a new surface drainage permit application should this board act favorably on the application.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this applicant, or this witness, sorry? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? None? Do you want to make a statement or anything?
I do have another witness.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind.
Mr. Doherty.
My apologies. Come on up. Okay, Mr. Doherty, do you swear a firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Alexander Doherty, last name is D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y, professional planner. Here on behalf of Midtown Associates at 101 Tribalter Avenue, Suite 18, Morse Plinque.
And Mr. Doherty has appeared before this board.
February.
Your license is, your license is still good, Alex?
Yes, it is.
Checked your email before you came up?
Yes, just came back from Nashville.
Okay, so just, all good. Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? There be no questions, witnesses accepted as an expert in architecture. Not planner. I know that's not a rule. Sorry. Congratulations on your new degree.
You want to do architecture?
No, no, no. So for this evening for the board, we prepared an exhibit packet. I have handouts for it. I do not have it digitally. It really is just a, it's just a three slides for neighborhood continuity. This is a new build application. If you please, as the board, I could pass it out, mark it Exhibit A1.
Please, yes. All right, for the record, this is a three-page document with aerials, two above and one, I'll call bird's eye.
Yes.
This was prepared by your firm, is that correct?
Yes, it's prepared by our office. Really, the, the intent of this exhibit is really for orientation of the neighborhood. And we are in the R1 zone, blocks 6502, Lot 3. As you've heard, this is a 35,250 square foot lot, outlined in yellow, as you see on Slide 1. Really, the aerial here is of what the prior home used looked like, which you just saw, some photos prior. And to the extent of the concrete, you can kind of see on the top one here, some of that gray behind the house, the lot, you know, had excessive, excessive amount of asphalt. So we, Slide 2 is really the same, just a new label on it that says vacant. Additionally, what you'll see is for continuity and comparison, there is a new buildout across the street, as you see in the Slide 2 labeled 6,200 new. The next slide, as we take the drone out, give you a real perspective on where we're at in the property, what's going on in the neighborhood, and, you know, for, for some comparisons. We are here for the FAR. That variance really does control the scale and massing of these structures. When we look at scale and massing, certainly from a planning standpoint, we want neighborhood continuity, consistency. We don't want to be proposing a project that is too big for the neighborhood, out of character. You know, the quality of life in, in the neighborhood, it certainly can be related to visual, having that intrusive visual. So we believe this is very compatible. We are 2.5% over on the required FAR. It's Section 170-87 CC for the local ordinance here. And when we look at this application and, and we're proposing here, you'll see the, the additional two homes labeled on that third slide, number nine and number 11, Cam Lot. They're around the same range, to 6,200 square, square feet. What we're proposing really, when we look at the percentage of the 17.5% versus the 15, at 2.5%, is a makeup of about 705 square feet. I had the opportunity to sit back here for a little bit. The ceiling tiles above my head are two feet by two feet. So if you take from the light to the light, this area, it's about what we're looking at, but that again, that's proportioned throughout the whole building. I will note that, you know, the prior home was a two-car garage, is it a three-car garage? It's more of a modern living arrangement, consumer expectations for the new world of housing we're dealing with. I will say that when we talk about the overall importance of FAR and why we, you know, hold strong to FAR, it's about site intensity. Can the site accommodate the additional FAR? I'm sure this board's heard that many times over. What do we mean by that? The intensity, as you've heard, the lot has historically been home to more impervious coverage than we're proposing. So from a build-out perspective, this, this, this house may be larger, but the design is, is superior design than what was there. We are alleviating the impervious coverage, bringing that down for more sustainable development practices, not to have any adverse effects onto the neighbors. Stormwater management is a concern that many of us throughout the industry are faced with with this application. The general bulk requirements from that, as you've heard, we're only here for one variance, 2.5% over on the FAR. Everything from front yard, side yard, rear yard, building coverage, height, everything is in compliant. This is really a design component here. Again, the habitable floor area is, is more internal to the building. We are in bringing a new, modern structure to this site, to this neighborhood. This is a positive investment to the site for the various impervious coverage regions and in compliance with the general bulk standards. We are proposing a single-family home in a single-family, you know, zone. When we look at this at the same time, has the living modern arrangements that most homeowners are seeking additions for and alterations for. I think this adds value to the site, which adds value and quality to the neighborhood. It's a positive investment for everybody here. I think we certainly are compatible with what we're seeing in this immediate neighborhood. When we look at the, the difference here, I want to point out, though we are in compatibility with the habitable floor area, you know, that we, we are not asking for that variance. you know, that we, we are not asking for that variance. So for the board, for the municipality as a whole, you have the floor area ratio, and you, then you have the habitable floor area. So you have a second leverage, if you will, of control here, you know, the control, scale, and mass. We're not, we're not seeking any other relief other than just the ratio. When we look at this, we have a site that has utilities, sewer water connection. You know, the site can accommodate this buildout. We have an extensive driveway. We have a three-car garage. You know, it is a, certainly a modern home. There will be no adverse effects with this, with this house. From a planning standpoint, the intensity of the use here with this project, I think we certainly advanced the goals of the zone for the single-family dwelling, you know, a positive investment into the site, turning over older housing stock, which is certainly the case throughout several properties here in the immediate neighborhood. I think we advanced the goals of the municipal land use law, Purpose A. Purpose I, particularly for desirable vision environment, this is a very well-designed architecturally speaking, this, this, this house is impressive. Certainly Purpose C for adequate light area and open space. We are not seeking any other bulk dimensions. So though the house is larger, our neighbors, you know, surrounding us certainly still maintain the zone intent and sound planning is rooted in zoning. So with that being said, I think we certainly have more efficient use of land, you know, and as well as desirable visual environment. I do not see any substantial detriment here from a planning standpoint, given that all the other mechanisms for control are in place. We are asking for just about 705 square feet of additional space spread throughout the house, really imperceivable from the public eye and the public realm. This house will certainly be in line with the neighborhood, the continuity and the intent of the zone. I think the relief really is minimal. Though it is important to have these discussions, I do not think there's going to be any adverse effects. And I certainly do think the site can accommodate this additional 705 square feet of FAR. With that being said, the case law is, again, can the site accommodate the, the additional FAR? With this new buildout comes best engineering practices, as you've heard, stormwater management in, in that regards. I do not see any adverse effects with this additional FAR. I think the criteria has been met. I believe approval will be warranted. And when we look at these FAR for new homes, particularly, you know, we, we want to see this, these homes in harmony and rhythm with the neighborhood. And again, the impacts are minimal, if any, here. So with that, I'll, I'll conclude. I'll leave, the criteria's are met and approval will otherwise be warranted.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
You're welcome.
No further questions for this witness.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
I got one question, I guess. I know you'd say 700 and something square feet.
705.
Yeah, where, I'm just trying to figure out where that, where that is because I'm coming up with more like 907.
I did, I did the quick math, 17.5% of the lot area and then the 15% of the lot area, and the difference between them, I, I got 705. If I'm wrong, I do apologize. I'm not trying to mislead the board.
Okay, I'm just looking, just 60, because you're at the 35,250, 15% allowed is 52,8750, and now you're...
17.5.
I'm being told by my engineer that Mr. Sherman is correct.
I do apologize.
Almost, almost 908 square feet.
I might have missed something. I do apologize.
You should leave the math to the engineers. Thank you very much.
I do not. I was trying to figure out just how many square feet we're actually over, so I took the 7.5.
It's actually on the plan.
But I do, I do believe the testimony still holds strong that this is imperceivable from the public realm. The setbacks, controls are in place. The, the new buildout is less intensive on the property by way of impervious coverage. So the home is bigger, the, the property actually feels a little bit lighter. And the benefits of that does come at the reduction of asphalt on, on the property, which, you know, really has impacts on stormwater management. But I will say, the home is impressive, the design is impressive. It meets the standard for the neighborhood. We have a young family, a growing family, you know, a family to stay. So there's plenty of room to kind of grow into this home and certainly adds value to the overall neighborhood.
I, I have a question, which really would be for the architect who's not here. But no access to the attic, I assume, or is there anything planned? Whoever wants to, try to jump in there.
No access to the attic.
No access.
Oh, okay, no access, so, okay, no problem with stipulating that in the resolution?
No problem at all, yep.
Okay.
No, there, just to be clear, it's not that there's no access to the attic, that if there were access to the attic, that access to the attic is either through a set of pull-down stairs or some other movable board to get into the attic. It won't be a, a flight of stairs where somebody could easily walk up and perhaps use it for ping pong.
There's no, there's no clearances permitting that in the attic anyway. It's just a hatch with a small accessway for emergency.
For the, the floor area ratio and the floor area, they're defined and, you know, for floors, and the attic is clearly defined as having a pull-down, not having an open staircase. So the percentages are, are on point. This is a pull-down.
Thank you for the clarification.
I guess the only other thing that I would want to add to that is that would they be agreeable to a condition of approval that, that will not be turned into, that it can't be a living space?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Are there any other questions? Are there any questions from the public regarding this witness? Do you have any other witnesses?
I do not have any.
Okay. I learned my lesson quickly. Do you have any statements you want to make?
Well, what I'll do is, because I have a little bit of a cold and losing my voice, I'm going to rely on the statements of my witnesses and just present the application as we put it in. I think it's a good application. Want to point out that there's a house right across the street, two other houses in the neighborhood, all of this proposed size. So it's definitely in keeping with everything there.
Does anybody in the public want to make any statements? Does anybody on the board want to make any statements? Please.
Just ask because you're relying on these two other properties here. So I'm going back to a question, if that's okay.
Of course.
Were there any other circumstances regarding those? Because they must have gotten the variance, like three Hastings must have, so. And you said it's the same size. So I'm just curious if there's any more, in terms of the, because you're relying on those properties as fitting into the surrounding neighborhood. So I'm wondering, were there any other peculiarities with respect to those that we should be aware of? Because we're, you asked us to rely on that.
Mr. Weisman, I want to, I want to remind you, we're, we're complying with all the bulk standards. So I don't know if they needed that variance or not.
Let me, let me just say this. What, those are existing homes, the ones that Mr. Doherty identified. So, you know, they're, they're existing. So whatever their circumstances were, whatever, is whatever their circumstances. But those are currently existing homes. So whatever process they went through, if any.
Right.
We don't know. And it's not part of, necessarily part of the decision-making.
Right. He said they were the same size, so I was just trying to get more color on what, what we're looking at, that's...
When I reference the size, typically FAR planning, we see more like the large warehousing, big anchor tenant structures. When we apply FARs to homes, it really is about the scale, size, continuity of the neighborhood. So we reference those as being, you know, akin to the size and scale. But the true test for FAR, when we look at it, is can the site accommodate that? And, you know, by virtue of that, you know, we can, we're not asking for any other relief. We're not, we're not, you know, actually bringing the site less intense by impervious. We have adequate parking, adequate setbacks, height. So by intensity of that, and for the, the case law applicable for FAR, I think we, we meet the intent of that case law. But for residential, as the Slide 3 shows, this proposed home is certainly in keeping with the neighborhood.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Anybody second?
I'll second it.
With the conditions of approval as...
As expected, regarding the attic.
Right, all those.
Mr. Horn.
Glory.
Mr. Horn.
Approved, yes.
Okay, Ms. Khan.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kane, yes. Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Mr. Beer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
Block 4707, Lot 12, Levin Village Drive, Application Number 2025-30-V. Javier and Camila Mayorga. Application seeks approval for the pool in the violation of the following section, 170-99C2, front yard setback 40 feet required, 36 proposed, 4 feet variance requested. 17087CC4, habitable floor area 30% allowed, 35.98% proposed, 5.98 variance requested.
Okay. Why don't we have you raise your hand? Do you swear firm? Do you swear firm and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so why don't we get your names, state and spell your names for the record?
Jason Werner, W E R N E R, Everclear Pools and Spas.
Camila Mayorga, C A M I L A. I am.
All right, and you're testifying as the...
The pool contractor, as expert witness, yes.
As, as, as the contractor, the builder?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, man, it's all yours.
Yeah.
Okay. So the Mayorgas are seeking to put in a 12-by-24 swimming pool in their rear yard. The setback required is 20 feet. We are seeking a setback of 10 feet, which is the variance we're looking for. We're in an R4 zone, as per the code, a 9,375 square foot lot is required. The lot that the Mayorgas have is 7,221 square feet, which means this lot is undersized by 2,154 square feet, which is a difference of about 23% smaller than required, which is the hardship that we are observing right here. Patio space in the yard has been minimized. 10% rear coverage is allowed. We, a total of only 5.91% is being proposed, even with the addition of the pool and new patio, proposed patio. Furthermore, all stormwater management guidelines have been observed to mitigate any adverse effect to the neighbors.
We're just looking at the, some paperwork here that looks a little funny. Not your fault necessarily.
I hope my math wasn't off.
It says, it says habitable floor area.
I hope my math wasn't off. He'll catch me.
Oh, Rachel.
So just, so, just so you know what, you know, government transparency, that's the new thing now, supposedly. Only for some. Comment over. Okay, so on the board's agenda, just so you understand what we're looking at and why I said it didn't, something didn't seem right to me. You're only putting in a pool, correct? So there is a notation on our agenda tonight that the request you're making is not only for the setback, but that it's also for habitable floor area ratio, which would not apply to a pool. I like to live out by the pool. I think my wife would like me to live out by the pool. But that's not habitable floor area. So I think that that...
I'm sorry, that was, that was a mistake, must have been taken from a different denial. So I apologize.
It's, it's no problem.
But notices were, in fact, checked and they were correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the denial of application looks okay.
Yes, apologies.
So at the, at the end of the day, just so everybody's aware, don't look at your agenda. Look at, look at your, the application that's been submitted, which indicates that the only relief that's being sought is a setback. And as the gentleman indicated, not to reiterate his comment, but that is a bulk variance and that he is asking, or he's stating that the reason for the bulk variance is because of the shape and size of the lot and therefore saying that that's a hardship under, under C1.
Yes.
Boil it down.
Thank you, sir.
And you noted that the lot was undersized?
Yes, sir, about 23 square, uh, 23%, I'm sorry.
And if it was full size, you probably wouldn't be before us or, for very minimum?
We, we probably wouldn't be before you. I mean, you're looking at over 2,150 square feet, which is quite a lot of space. So you would have to imagine that the lot would be wider.
That's your, so you, you have a hardship.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions?
Yeah, the, the only question I have is like on the survey submitted, it shows, I mean, I know you're asking for the pool within 10 feet of the side yard on the left side of the house. The survey shows a dead center. But I guess the other question is, why can't it be dead center?
The Mayorgas have two young children and they're trying to maximize usable space for the kids to be able to play safely in their backyard. If this lot was a conforming size, that wouldn't be an issue because there would be plenty of space for the kids to play. But given that we are undersized by 2,154 square feet, it does, you know, if we put the pool in the middle of the yard, they're restricted on both sides because you do have patio space that you have to be mindful of with the kids playing. It does, could create a hazard. I mean, little kids will be little kids.
Little kids, little problems, big kids, big problems, just wait.
Yeah.
Is any, anybody else on the board have any questions?
Yeah, have you thought about landscaping and what's going to go between your neighbor and the pool?
We can plant trees if that's needed for privacy and any noises that might come from the pool. We already have a line of pine trees on the left. We can mimic that on the right side of the, of the, of our house.
So we could put privacy screening in between the two homes on the side that we are seeking the setback?
Does anybody in the public have any questions? Yeah. So you're looking at the screen a lot. Please come up. How are you?
Fine. I left my cane in my chair. My name is Pat Nave, N A V E. My address is 16 Concord Drive, and I'm here in opposition to this improvement based on the...
So at this time, just questions?
Okay.
And then we'll let you have a statement if you want to give a statement.
Okay.
So if you have specific questions, please ask at that time, at this time.
I'm sorry, you want me to ask them?
Yes, ask them questions.
Okay.
And then later on, if you want to make a statement, feel free to make a statement.
I got it, okay. My first question is, let me just flip my paper over here. The question that I have, first of all, was the one that was just mentioned before about the location of the pool over to the right side, which is in clear violation of the side, the setback on the side. My next concern would be lighting, and I would like to know what arrangements you've made for lighting based on the fact that you have lights in your yard now. What type of lighting do you anticipate putting into this area?
Do you anticipate any landscape lighting?
I, I mean, nothing beyond a simple light inside the pool. No, it won't be any additional lighting in the, in the patio.
Okay, do you, you have lighting right now in your backyard for your usage, correct? You have an up, you have an above-ground pool in your yard now, or have had, an above-ground pool. Now, have you had lighting in your rear yard for this?
No, I mean, I have like a set of like, how do you call it, like bar lights or something like that?
Lights, correct, lights, okay.
When I'm there, but they're not always on.
One of, one of the stipulations was that information had to be included about drainage and drainage for the pool and what arrangement you had made for drainage because of the fact that when this house was built, this was a knockdown. When this house was built, it was double in size, the driveway was double in size, and your patio is approximately half the size of your house. Our concerns in the neighborhood is that the runoff from what has already been in place from this new addition, with this new property, in addition to now having a pool that's 12 by 25 or 12 by 24, in addition to the one, I think the plans say one-foot pavers around the outside.
We need to, we need to, we need to ask questions. So the question, so the question was about drainage.
Okay, so my concern is what drainage arrangements have you made on your property for the addition of this pool, again, a solid surface?
The pool itself does... The pool itself does, will act as a retention pond if it does rain. There is minimum patio around the perimeter of the pool and we are still well below the 10 percent. We're even on, under 6 percent of coverage. There's about six inches of space available between where the water is and the top of the coping. So it'd be a significant rainstorm in order to fill that pool. We will have a discharge line that can be rolled out to the street from the equipment pad and it would just, for any overflow, would go into the street. Most pools do with their backwash and things of that nature, although we are using a DE, cartridge filter, not DE. We don't use Diatomaceous Earth.
I'm sorry. Did you say it would go out to the street?
It would go into the front yard, which could go.
To the front yard, to the street? Because this house is not, am I not right that the house is elevated, is much higher than the street? It's not street level. Your house is set higher than the street, correct? So that all of that drainage would go down your front yard, down your driveway into the street and then therefore into the, the public property, the public street, correct?
Which would not negatively affect any neighbors.
Okay. One other question then regarding this, I see you have another variance here. You're looking for a variance for the front of the house, is that right?
No, that was a mistake. That was already addressed.
That was a mistake. Okay, fine. All right. I guess my concern is that, my, no, I can't express my concern. My feeling is that you're putting in a pool that's too large for the piece of property you have and I'm wondering whether it could be reduced in size, certainly in length, why you don't have it in the other direction and then again, why you don't have it centered in your property. I understand. You may be for about having younger children. Is that the only reason?
Usable space in the yard is a primary concern for our clients. A 12, 12 by 24 square foot pool is a very small pool. A standard in-ground pool for, if you go by the usual sizes, is 16 by 32, which is 512 square foot. This is 288 square feet. We did attempt to minimize the size of the pool while still making it usable for the family. I mean, to go much smaller would be, I mean, it's kind of a bathtub at that point. To go across the property horizontally, we would affect probably both setbacks. We would trigger, one way or another, we'd be here for a variance if we were to go horizontally as opposed to vertically perpendicular to the house.
Just a quick question for you. Did you make a comment about the size of the property being unusual or an odd size?
It's undersized by 23 percent for what's permitted, for what's required by the town.
Okay. So those are my questions. May I make a statement now?
After we're done with all the questions, then we have people come back up for statements.
Fine. Works.
So you get to step in. Whoever else would like to come up next?
Well, is concerns now or...
It is questions. Questions for, questions for the witness or the applicant.
I'm Andy Cassetti, 24 Concord Drive, and I have a few questions.
Let me just ask, where are you in relation to the house? I should have asked.
I'm on the right side of the property, in the back.
The right side? Okay. Just so we understand.
As you can, as you can see on the map or the diagram, where, where do you have your living space? It looks like you're overusing the space right now for my property.
Sir, the only, the only application, the only application on for tonight is about the swimming pool.
Okay.
So the, the, any issues with the size of the house, the pavers in the back, the driveway, anything else with regard to the property is not before the board tonight. The only thing before the board tonight is the placement of the pool relative to the side yard.
Okay.
That's the jurisdiction of the board tonight.
All right. And that's, then I'm fine.
Thank you. We'll give you a chance to come back, of course. Ma'am, did you want to come up also?
I don't have questions. I have concerns.
Okay. Just, we'll, we'll deal with that then. Okay. Does anybody else in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay. Does anybody in the public want to make any statements? Come on back. Got to follow the procedures. Otherwise, otherwise my lawyer sells, yells at me.
This is difficult because we don't want to not be neighborly. We do want to be neighborly. And in our neighborhood, I'm sorry, my name?
We're going to swear in because now it's question time. Do you swear firm and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. Can you do us the favor of just stating and spelling your name for the record one more time?
Fine. My name's Pat, Patricia Nave and like Nancy, A-V as in Victor, E. Nave.
Address?
16 Concord Drive.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Median lot size in Livingston is just over 15,000 square feet. In our neighborhood, immediately to this area, most of our properties have a footage of seven or 8,000 square feet, which means we're close. There are two homes on Village Drive in our immediate area on this pic, this map that was sent, that are a little bit larger than that. So when the pie was cut for Crestmont Hills, which is what our development was called when it was originally designed, there were two homes that got a bigger piece of pie and it's 11 and 13 Village Drive, your home and the people next door. A little further down on Village Drive, some of the homes have a deeper backyard, but basically we're between seven and 8,000 square feet. So they do have a bigger piece of property. When the developers have come in, they have knocked down smaller houses, built larger houses up to the property, the allowed property line, which means the space that we had between our homes is no longer what it used to be because places are larger now. And we know that they're putting in higher homes and basement living and everything else. This is just a little bit beyond, this pool is a little bit beyond my, I feel, I'm speaking only for myself, what is appropriate for your property because so much has been developed already on your property and, and it's just, it's just beyond. And also the other thing that I feel in, in our neighbors, we have a lot of water problems in our basements, which probably go back to the 1940s when the homes were built. We all have water. We all have had to, to mediate this. We've all had to put in some pumps and it's not getting better, it's getting worse. And it's getting worse because of the size of the homes that are going in and all of the impervious property that's being put in with patios and whatever else is happening. And even though you have your situation that you have to solve at your house, and I hope you don't have any water in your basement yet, but we all do. And so when all of these buildings are being built and you have a pool now on top of that large patio, on top of that large house, on top of the larger driveway, we're getting your water. And whatever drainage you have to put in to accommodate whatever water is not going to be there for you because of your pool, it's going to be, it's going to be, wind up on our property, which is what we're all dealing with. And so my, my, my feeling, and I'm not, you know, pulling any punches here, is that we have lighting concerns, but our main concern is, is water and, and the fact that this is just an overdevelopment of your property and because of the size of it is going to impact us with lighting and noise and dogs barking and, and other things that impact our quality of life. So I respectfully leave it with that and that's how we feel, or how I feel. I'm speaking only for myself. And I think that, you know, I know that you have to, I don't know, we'd be putting another fence around your pool in addition to the fence you have around your property right now, but I just think it's above and beyond and not appropriate for the fact, for your, for your pleasure and your quality of life perhaps, but for the rest of us, not necessarily. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would somebody else like to make a statement? Please, come on up.
Comment.
Yeah. Comment, statement. First, do you swear firm and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name?
Karen Castanas, C-A-S-T-A-N-H-A-S.
Okay. Address?
22 Concord Drive, the house directly and back.
Okay.
Okay. I have exactly the same concerns as Pat, exactly. The water, I'm nervous about the drainage. I'm worried that we're going to get water in our basement. We have had a lot of water in our basement. We've had it looked at by professionals. We've had work done to our basement. I understand it's, it's not their problem because, you know, that it's their house, but I'm, I'm very concerned about the digging of the, you know, of the lot and the drainage and what happens if a storm comes, what happens if the waterfall. They have a pool right now. The lighting is horrendous in their backyard. I've asked them nicely, I've gone to their house, rang their doorbell, asked them, please, can you take down? They have three, four strings of lights, four. Two in the back. Their backyard approaches my backyard. They're very close to my house. They, they have stringed lights all the way on the side of their fence. It's like Marty in the backyard. It's so bright. I have my shades very tight at night. The light shines into my room where I have to blockade it with things and I'm, to the point where I have to call someone and get blackout shades. I don't think I should have to go through that expense. I've asked them very nicely to please lower the lights. I'm not asking them to remove the lights. I asked if they could just lower the lights to their fence. They're above the fence. They have a sixth of fence, okay? And their property is very close to my property. So I have, I have concerns about that, the noise, okay? I mean, there's other things where, you know, they have a dog that barks constantly in the backyard for hours at a time, two hours at a time. The dog's at their, their door scratching on it. Now, it's not my, you know, it's not my place to call animal control, but I feel bad for the dog. You know, 100 degree heat in the summer and the, and the dog is out there.
Once again, we're here...
These are my concerns, is all I'm saying. Noise, okay? They have a pool...
But we're talking, we're talking about...
Variance, I get it.
We're, we're talking about a, a pool...
Right.
That they're asking for a side yard variance and that's before the board.
And I understand.
And things about, and just to be clear, things about lighting, the dog barking, noise from the neighbor, even water on your property, okay? All those things are not before this board. It's not this board's jurisdiction. If you have concerns about the dog barking, then as you said, that's animal control, that is making a complaint with the, with, with the municipal court, with the police, whatever the case is. If they're violating light, lights coming in to your home, you know, and it's causing a nuisance, that's a different jurisdiction. That's before a different, either the, through the police, through the municipal court, through code enforcement. That's not before the board, it's this board. What's before this board is simply whether or not that pool should be situated within a distance less than what's allowed under the ordinance.
Okay.
Just so we're on the same page. I'm not saying that your concerns aren't valid.
Okay.
I'm just saying you have to, I just want to be clear, the board's jurisdiction is about that.
Okay.
Not about, the, the board is not going to and cannot make a determination about whether or not this is a valid variance based upon those other issues, which I'll call nuisance issues.
I understand. My, my whole point of bringing them up is the pool is infringing upon my privacy. I can't even go into my backyard to read a book because they have a pool right now. It's an above the ground pool. That's their right. I understand that. I never complain.
And the other thing that, just, just once again, just to be clear, the pool is permitted.
Mm-hmm.
She, the, the applicant is allowed to have a pool.
Okay.
The only issue before the board is whether or not where that pool is being placed is allowed, meaning placed in relationship to what I'll call on the picture, the right side lot line.
Okay. But what about the back? What about the back?
There, there's no variance for that.
There's no variance that's being violated. So if they pushed this pool 10 feet to the left...
Yeah.
They wouldn't be here.
Okay.
It would just be, it would be built.
So it's the other neighbor on the other side.
So it's, no, if it's in the center, there's no variance required.
No, I understand that.
Right? So they, they're trying to move it over just to have more open space to kick a ball or whatever else the kids want to do, but the pool itself, as our attorney explained, and we'll make sure you guys understand, the pool, we're not talking about the pool.
Right.
The, the pool is okay.
Right.
It's just if it's here or if it's here.
Uh-huh.
So the other, as it was described, nuisance issues would just be moved around and hopefully neighbors can work all that out.
Okay.
As, that's not our privy.
Right.
That's nothing before us. We're only variances that you, you don't meet a line in the code and the line in the code is 10 feet is too far to the right and they've given testimony as to why this board should consider that.
Okay.
I, I hope that...
No, I understand. It just doesn't...
Yeah. It's, it's difficult sometimes.
It's difficult because...
And we try to, we want to listen to the neighbors.
Right.
We want to listen to the applicants. We want to take it all together and try to...
Right.
Make rationale decisions here on everyone's behalf.
And it's unfortunate because we, you know, we get along with all of our neighbors. I always thought we got along with them. We, you know, we don't really have anything to do with them. We tried to be friendly to them. I went over nicely...
Hopefully going forward, everyone will be on the same page.
And you know what I'm saying? But I, I, you know, as far as the pool goes, I don't want lights glaring in, in my house all night. I don't want pool parties all night long. I mean, I have some rights to privacy too.
Right, right. Then you can, if they're, if people are doing things that are not within municipal code, there's other avenues to address that. We just can't address that unfortunately.
Okay.
Or fortunately, probably. So...
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or statements that people would like to make? Is there any closing statement you guys would like to make?
Certainly. While we do appreciate her neighbor, the Mayorgas' neighbors' concerns, as you have stated, sir, that if we weren't seeking a side yard variance, this pool, we wouldn't even be here. This pool would probably be permitted already and under construction. We are just seeking the variance because we are an undersized lot. The neighbor to the right-hand side is not here. If there is an issue with, with concerns with privacy, the Mayorgas, Camila, had already said we could put a privacy screening. We are well under any coverage concerns as far as the rear yard coverage and patio has been minimized, so impervious surface has been minimized. I know as per DEP, the pool technically counts as pervious and doesn't count. However, in a practical setting, you do have six-inch catch basin before it would affect the neighbors.
Can I just make one more comment? They talk about the, the, on the right-hand side, they're brainless. That's why they're not used to this.
That's...
I mean, it's not, it's neither here nor there.
Neither here, neither here nor there.
They don't own the house.
Actually, it was on the left run. The one on the right, they all...
All right. Well, okay. All right. This is, this is not commentary back and forth. Remember, this is, for lack of a better term, a judicial proceeding. So we need to take clear testimony, we, the board needs to take clear testimony and we can't have back and forth in the group, perhaps afterwards. However this ends up tonight, maybe it would be a good neighborly thing to do to have a nice conversation and see what can be done into the future to perhaps avoid any future potential conflicts. That's just not me as an attorney. That's me and my role as a failed priest. There you go.
Okay. Does anybody on the board want to make any statements?
Okay. So thank you and thank you to the neighbors for coming out and for speaking. It really means a lot to us when neighbors and residents of Livingston take time out of their busy schedule to come and speak in front of us. So we do appreciate that and we appreciate you coming in front of us. So this is an interesting application and as you said, you wouldn't be here if the pool was just placed in the middle of your, your lot. Looking at the survey, 10 feet is really not a lot of space on the right. It's really not, especially if you were to put plantings in. You don't really have a whole lot of room there. I don't understand why it can't just be in the middle and then you wouldn't be here and you can build the pool. Um, that's how I look at it. And I think that if you were to move it, um, you can plant on both sides, and you can have privacy screening all the way around. And that might help the neighbors, and that might help you. But you would be able to plant green giant arborvitae's, and they grow very tall and beautiful. The deer don't eat them. And you can just, you know, do both sides, and you can have beautiful screening. In a couple of years, the neighbors won't even see the lights. So that's how I look at it. Um-
Um, I already have, uh, pine trees on my left, and they take the evergreens. And they take way less than 10 feet. Uh, it's probably less than the width of this table, so it's very doable to put them, even with 10 feet. Um, so I don't see that as a challenge. And as-
I don't, I don't remember the type of evergreens that you have. I don't remember.
Uh, they're-
That's not-
The, 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 I know landscaping was brought up before, but, um, landscaping is not part of the application. So, once again, you know, all that's before us is whether or not they have made a argument with proofs to place the pool where it is within the setback.
Okay.
I got a comment. So the good news is you're getting a pool. The concern is, as Lori had mentioned and I brought up before, is the pool not being in the center. Um, I feel that, yes, 10 feet is minimal to the side yard. Trees or no trees. Um, the, the fact is that it makes it worse for the neighbor on that side of the house with the pool being all the way over there, um, in the center. At least you're equidistant, and you wouldn't need to be here at all. Um, I, I know what you're saying about wanting extra space, but again, you have to deal with the size of the lot that you have and the choices of what you have. You can easily build this pool in the middle. You could put a fence right along that side of the pool if you wanted. Um, you know, which would be the same thing as if you had trees and, you know, and then you have space in between there. Um, you're also restricted because of the trees and the fence that's not on the property line, uh, which pushes that side smaller. But again, those are all things that affect you that could be remedied. I, I don't see a valid reason of why the variance needs to be, um, approved for the pool.
These are board comments. Anybody else have any comments or statements on the board? Please.
Yeah, I, I would just say it also, I think, I mean, the same trial, problem finding a good enough reason. I guess there, there's some reason. It's just whether it's strong enough. Uh, but also, for me, it also goes to the essence of why we have the setback requirement. Um, and these, from the, some of the complaints you hear, this, this is why they have the 20 feet. And it's, and you're asking for, uh, an encroachment of 50% of that amount. So this is the reason we have the laws in place. So it makes it, makes it very difficult because it seems, uh, that'd be a huge burden for, for us to go against what, that the statute is, protect neighbors, whether it's existing neighbors that are there now or future neighbors. To that, whoever's owning that land from now in the future on that lot. So that's what we have, that's what I'm thinking about.
I, I would say just move it to exactly where the setbacks would be. You don't have to move, maybe if you don't want to move it all the way to the center, but keep the setbacks so you don't need the variance.
Okay, um, I think we're, we're in a lull here, so I can ask this question. So I, I just want to clarify a comment or testimony that was made by the, by the builder, for lack of a better term. Um, and just make sure the board understands the, the testimony. The reason why the pool is placed in the location it is is to maximize the lawn in the rear yard as opposed to placing it in the middle, which would cause the backyard, in essence, to be-
Yeah.
-split on either side. That's the theory.
Yes, sir.
Correct? But the pool can be- and I want, I want the members to be clear because they've made this comment, and I just want to be clear. If the pool were moved over by 10 feet to be compliant with the right side, would it be compliant, would that make it compliant with all the other bulk variances? Or would you need to request another bulk variance if you moved it over 10 feet? Because I think that the board is of the opinion, and I don't know if we know this, but the board is of the opinion that if you were to move it 10 feet over, it would eliminate all variances. So that's why I question to you, and I just want the board to be aware of that information, if it does cause any other variance if you move it over. Or if it doesn't?
If the pool were put dead center in the yard, we'd touch the setbacks on both sides, exactly on the setbacks. Um, I just will reiterate that, given this is an undersized lot by over 2,100 square foot, if this was a conforming lot, it would give us enough room to not have to do that. Barely, to the point where I would have to have a survey or stake the pool. Otherwise, I'm going to have, be back here with it as built.
I have a comment-
It is that tight.
Uh, I have a comment, actually. However, I see the lot being irregular. And it's wider at the front, it's narrower at the end. So if it's a regular lot, if the line just, you know, parallel move, they, actually, basically, I was trying to point out, they actually lose about 10 feet on the right side because their lot goes, it's like a pie. So their backyard is narrow. I just want to make a comment for this particular lot dimension.
And let me just, uh, place on the record here because there was some misunderstanding earlier. The relief sought is under Town Ordinance 170-96A, Subsection 8, for a side yard relief. 20 feet is required, and 10 feet is requested.
Yes.
Okay, just, so we're all on the same page. So, um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We need to, uh-
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to, we need to move forward. Mr. Barbula's falling asleep.
We don't, we don't, we don't-
We don't want that to happen.
I think, I think you've heard, I mean, I'm-
Go ahead.
I think you've heard what the board has said. And maybe it makes sense to go back and either look at placing the pool in a different spot, making the pool smaller based on the size of your lot. Um, and as Mr. Sherman said, this is the size of your lot, and you have to work within the constraints of what your lot is. Um, and you have a beautiful paper patio back there, and you want to have room for your kids, and you have all these things. So look at what your, what your lot can hold. Um, and I understand what you're saying, and I get it. But we also have to look at what the best thing is for your particular lot. So my recommendation is to go back and relook at this. And again, look at the size of the pool, look at the placement, and maybe come back and see if there's something else that works. And that's just-
Anybody else want to make a statement or concur or not concur? So we kind of know where we are?
I, I concur, right? I think the lot is what the lot is. And looking at what your alternatives are to place and stay within the confines is advisable.
I think that's kind of the flavor. Um, we can adjourn this if you want. So you can kind of talk about it, kind of see if you can come up with something, and this will leave this case open. So maybe you can figure out something that works maybe a little bit better, and maybe it's more acceptable to the members, so, um-
We'll adjourn.
Well, and, and, you know, and it may still, I mean, we're, we're, we're going off the cuff here. So I think, as indicated, you, you may need to look at the, the lines to be sure. So to make a determination tonight on your behalf may be premature, is what you're saying.
We're going to adjourn.
I put words into your mouth, but I think you agree with me.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Okay, so this, this matter, June 11th?
June 11th, then. They'll give you time to think about it, figure it out, and maybe you work it out. You don't need to come before us. And then that just gets, you tell, you know, that'll be on its own, and you go forward. Or you come before us, and we hopefully can work everything out for you. Okay?
So for the members, for the members of the public, this matter is going to be relisted for June, uh, 11th. No further notices required. This is the notice. If, for whatever reason, the variance is been removed, and they're proceeding without a variance, it's not going to come back. But if it is coming back with any sort of variance, it'll be on June 11th. And you can come back at that time, should you wish.
Okay. Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, Block 6001, Lot 4933 Tower Road, Application Number 2025-18-3, Rodeo Home. Uh, application, applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family residence in violation of the following section. 17097 C2 Frontier, setback 60 feet required, 46 feet proposed, 14 feet variance requested. 17087 CC2 Habitable Floor Area, 18 person allowed, 26.99 proposed, 8.99 variance requested.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, John Barber Rule on behalf of the applicant. Hopefully I could keep you awake and, uh, move this along a little bit more. I have the professionals here at Ayman Sedra. Architect will testify first. If Mr. Wenzel, if you could swear him in, please.
Do you swear in front and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
All right, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Uh, my name is Ayman Sedra. Uh, A-Y-M-A-N, last name is Sedra, S-E-D-R-A.
All right, and since, like the planning board two weeks ago or maybe a month ago-
I was here two weeks ago.
...about, uh, 287 times.
Right.
He is a licensed architect. Mr. Sedra, your license is in good standing today?
Yes, correct.
And we checked about 15 minutes ago. You're still good.
Yes, 10 minutes ago.
And based on the fact, Mr. Chairman, he's been here many times before, I'd ask that you accept him, Mr. Sedra, as a professional in architecture.
Does anyone on the board have any questions, objections regarding this witness? There being no objection, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture.
You need to, uh-
Okay, so I'll walk you through the plans of this house. Um, the first floor consists of the living spaces. And we also have two-car garage, and we have a guest bedroom with its own bathroom and, uh, and a closet. The area for the first floor is, the livable area is 2,109, and the garage area is 468. Um, next to that, on the left, is the basement plan. The basement consists of one big open space that's going to be used as a rec room. Uh, we have also a bedroom with its own egress access. Um, we don't have a walkout basement. Uh, the basement is only, only accessible from the, from inside the house. In the basement, we also have a playroom and media room. Uh, the area for the basement matches the area for the first floor, which is 2,000, uh, 2,109. Um, the next page shows the, the second floor on the left. The second floor consists of, uh, four bedrooms with its own bathrooms and closet. We also have a two-story foyer. We have a laundry room. And also, the, the family room being in the center of the house. Uh, it's one-story family room. Uh, there is an overlook from the, by the staircase to the family room below. But it's only one story. Um, the exterior of the building, um, it's a colonial-style home. Um, we have two towers, one on the left, one on the right. And the material is, uh, we're going to use lap siding, hardy, uh, siding. And we're going to use also, uh, vertical board and batten on the top of the gables. Uh, we will use dark roofs, uh, black windows. Uh, we have also some AZAC panels, standing seam metal roof above the garage. Uh, the image next, under that is the rear elevation where it shows the, some, some of the windows and the gable end on the right. Uh, as you see, the center piece between the, between where the windows are on the left and the right, it's coming down with the roof line to make the family room only one story. Um, and the sides is pretty similar to, uh, to the same pattern that we have around the house. Um, the second floor area is 2,041. And, uh, we are applying for 8.99 floor area ratio variance. The habitable floor area that's required by code is 4,870. Uh, we are at 4,168, which, which we are 702 below the habitable floor area. Uh, we're exceeding the ratio by 8.99, hence we're here. Um, and, uh, also, the, we have an open space. It's not a big area of open space, which is counted twice but only used once, which is about 43 square feet. Um, the attic is going to only be accessible through a pull-down stair from the second floor. Also, uh, we have a height of 7'9" from the attic floor to the underside of the ridge line. Um, with the collar tie, the height is about 5'8".
Now, and the play, the playroom, is that also double-counted?
Which one, the?
The, uh, one, one-story playroom? Is that the height there?
The foyer, you mean? The family room, the family room, no. The family room was only counted one, once because of the roof collapses down to 13 feet at the back.
And, uh, okay.
Ms. Barbula, why don't you get, you, you got the, uh, the Sinatra mic there so you can just get a little closer to that.
Usually I talk loud enough, I don't have to worry about it. I'll, I'll hopefully make sure we get it.
There you go.
So, uh, so we have the one, the section is the-
This exhibit is new, so we have to add, uh, call it A1.
So, Mark, this is A1 color rendering?
All right, oh, the facade. And, and Ayman, what we're talking about, that extra square footage that Livingston has in Kitterman County, is that shown in the front here? Is that above the, uh, behind that balcony area?
Yeah, it's past that balcony.
Okay. All right. I submit, Mr. Sedra, for any questions of the board?
Anybody have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? It's a, you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Please come forward. And please take the mic, or who's going to set it up for you?
Trust me, I don't need a mic.
No, we, we-
No, we need it for the, we need it for the recording.
Recording.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Um, Janet Pinto, you need that, my name?
Yes.
Okay, and I live at 36th Tower Road, which is across the street from 33. And, um, what I'd like to know is, I would like to know the exact length and width of the, of the actual lot.
Of the, of the lot itself or of the building?
The lot itself.
Okay.
Hold on, one second. He's going to show it up right here.
The width is 85 feet, and the depth is 171.03 on one side, and the other side is 192.30.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, if you have a question, I don't have a problem. The board would love to hear it. You want to ask a question?
Don't be shy.
You don't want to ask a question?
Not yet.
Okay. If you have a question, you gotta, you gotta come up.
Please come up.
Please understand, this is a recording, so we need to have your-
Yes, my name is Albert Celoyaliay, C-E-L-O-A-L-I-A-J. I'm the neighbor next door.
Which, which I-
31 Tower Road. Uh, my question is, why is- My question is, why does master big house have to be in small property when all the house over there, 29 Tower Road, has like a big lot and is 3,000 square feet? And this have to be 5,000 square feet for what? Why have to be so big?
Well...
Thank you.
You're welcome. There's allowances for sizes of houses based on where we are in the zone, and this house has come before us for two variances, which is the front yard, distance from the street to the front yard, which the planner will, I assume...
Correct.
Discuss. And also, what's called the habitable floor area ratio, which is the size of the floors divided by the area of the lot. So those are the only two things. The other sizes of the house are not before us, they meet the zoning laws. So we can only deal with what is outside the zoning laws, and that's what their job is to explain to us and prove to us why. So I hope that answered your question, and you can come back up and ask more questions, now or later, whenever you want, so.
Thank you. At this point, then, I would like to call Nick as my planner, and thank you, Mr. Sedra. Mr. Graviano, you swear, oh, I caught you drinking. Do you swear from, drinking water, that is, just for the record? Do you swear in front and tell truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can please have...
And Nick, you're a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And you've testified before this board probably now, maybe 100 times?
Not, no, not that much. I wish it was that many times, but no, not that many times.
Almost.
I have been here pretty frequently.
We're getting there, maybe by the end of 2026.
Maybe.
So in any event, your planning license is a good stead, and you have been qualified as an expert in planning both in this, in this municipality and many other municipalities throughout the state, and as well, and your license is still good as of tonight?
Yes, over, over 100 municipalities in 18 different counties. License is currently valid. Nicholas Graviano, Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners, just for the record.
And you have had, you have been hired to review this particular application. You're familiar with the site, you're also familiar with the architecturals and the reference, and you've heard the testimony of the architect. Could you give the board your benefit of your planning expertise in reference to why this particular variance would be suitable for this particular site? Thank you.
Certainly. The applicant is before the board this evening for a specific piece of property known as Block 6,001, Lot 49. That is a 15,441 square feet lot in the R2 residential zone. I would like to note that this zone does require a minimum lot area of 25,000 square feet. So the applicant is an undersized lot by a little bit under 10,000 square feet. The applicant does have a pre-existing nonconformities with respect to lot width and lot depth that are not being augmented by this application. You heard in the intro that the applicant is requesting the front yard setback variance. However, as per the letter of the zoning ordinance, the applicant actually is with conformance, but is going to respectfully put on the proofs identified by the municipality's zoning and engineering office. The front yard setback study indicates an average setback of 41.78 feet. The house presently has a 46.67 feet setback. Yeah, excuse me. The applicant is proposing 46 feet, so that's certainly within the ordinance allotment for the reduction of the front yard setback for the proposed dwelling. That relief can be granted under both the C1 and C2 criteria, and I'll get into the purposes of zoning after I get through the FAR variance analysis. The applicant is requesting 8.99%. While that might, may seem like a little bit larger number than this applicant is typically requesting, the applicant, as the architect indicated, is approximately 700 square feet under the habitable area requirement of the R2 district. The R2 district requires a maximum habitable area of 4,870 square feet. The applicant is at 4,168 square feet. One of the beautiful things that makes this lot very attractive and very special in its particular setting is that it backs up to the golf course. It does a butt open space. So I did a lot analysis of Block 6,001, and this is a block where you will find some of the larger homes in the municipality, ranging everywhere from 4,400 square feet up into 8,388 square feet. So this is a neighborhood where larger homes are found, and you will find throughout the state of New Jersey and through the country that larger homes abut golf courses. And that's what the applicant's proposing this evening, is a home that's befitting of its location next to a golf course. One of the residents touched on a home at 29 Tower Road. I would like to indicate that that is a five-bedroom, six-bedroom bathroom house with over 4,800 square feet of living space. While that lot is larger, it isn't a regular lot, that the major, not the majority, but a portion of the lot is actually L-shaped behind the neighbor next door's lot. So in that lot's context, the front yard setback and the side yard setback are exactly similar to what the applicant's proposing before you this evening. That's certainly a beautiful home that has not caused a substantial detriment to the zone planner zoning ordinance. Looking at the FAR variance, the applicant must demonstrate that the site can accommodate the proposed use, given the increase in FAR. There's certainly no problems associated with the applicant's proposal before you this evening. All of the required setbacks are being met. The applicant is actually two feet under the permitted height requirement of the district, so there are no substantial impairments to the zone planner zoning ordinance, nor is any light air or open space compromised with the creation of this dwelling. So certainly, that, that variance can be granted. Furthering purposes of zoning, A, promotion of the public health, safety, and general welfare. The applicant is proposing stormwater management on this lot. Additionally, advancing purpose G, sufficient space and appropriate location for variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And as I said, this is a house abutting open space where you customarily find larger homes. And then lastly, you saw the impeccably designed house, certainly advances purpose I, a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. So the two, two relief be, the two items of relief being requested by the applicant tonight can be granted without substantial impairment to the zone planner zoning ordinance.
So we are, we're asking for the front yard variance, but if you take the averaging, as you indicated, it really wouldn't even be a variance, correct?
I know the municipality interprets that as a variance, but the letter of the law of the ordinance is being met with the applicant's proposal.
So that basically means, so that people can understand, is that other houses meet that same setback, and that would be, that this house would be in keeping with those other houses?
Yes, for example, House 27 is at 45.43, House 29 is 44.64, 31 is at 46.52, 35 is 46.63, and 37 is 46.54, and the applicant's coming in at 46, where 46.67 exists.
So we're, we're right, we're right there in the hunt of all of those others.
It's, it's pretty much dead on.
Right. And then also, in terms of, one of the members of the public asking about the size of the house, this is a matter of fact, based on the, based upon this area and the fact that it's up against the golf course, and the various houses that you had observed and indicated, this is in between the sizes of the houses that have currently been redeveloped in the area, is that correct?
Yes, and it, and it's substantially consistent with the house at 29, in terms of setbacks and, and massing.
I submit, Mr. Graviano, to the board for any questions that the board may have.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? No, no questions? Okay. Oh, please come up. And then you'll all get a chance to make statements later, too.
Lev Kigel, K-I-G-E-L, question just...
Address, please, sir.
35 Tower Road, next door. And I have no objections to building a 10,000 square feet house, only objection how far it's coming from the street. So if you can repeat one more time, you mentioned like 46, 40, I just missed this part.
Yeah, no, no problem. I'll run over those numbers for you again.
And we're talking about from the street to the house, or...
Well, it's, it's from the property line, which isn't necessarily the street, and that applies for all the houses that are, that are given calculations for. The house as stands today is setback 46.67 feet. The proposed house will be 46 feet, so the applicant's only bringing it closer to the street by .67 feet. So that's like eight inches.
Eight inches?
Yes. Eight inches forward, yes. So the neighboring, the neighboring houses are at 45.43.
No, no, I, I got wrong information. I got information that got coming up 14 feet, eight inches.
No, sorry, eight inches.
Eight inches, I have no clue.
Now, just to...
I think we have a heck of a problem.
Now, just so, just, just so the gentlemen's clear, I, I understand...
I apologize.
No, you don't. No, 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 you do not have to apologize.
I got wrong information, 14 feet, I was confused.
No, 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 it's, it's perfectly fine, it's a very, it's a very valid concern. The way, the way it gets listed on the agenda, just so you understand, that 14 feet is what's known as the variance, from what is required to where they actually are. What Mr. Graviano's talking about is something that's actually, quite frankly, more logical and made more sense to you, is where is the house now and where is it going? So Mr. Graviano is...
It's going to move to the eight inches.
Eight inches, right. But they're, they're just...
I have no more questions.
That's...
Okay, thank you. No, we appreciate that.
Valid question, sir.
We could clarify that.
I'm glad, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I don't think you would give us 14 feet. But in any event, that is our, our application. Those are my witnesses, and if you want to open up for comments, because I think you may have a comment here.
Yes. Would anyone like to make a comment?
Comments?
Would you like to make a comment, sir? Did you want to come back?
No.
No, no comments? Oh, yep.
No, they're on the next application.
No, 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 no.
Come on, come, please.
No, no, I'm sorry.
We just have to swear you in first, because you're making a comment.
It's a very nice smile. Do you swear in front and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Absolutely.
I knew you would. Can you please state and spell your name for the record one more time, ma'am?
My name is Janet, middle initial is the letter A, Pinto, P-I-N-T-O.
Address?
36 Tower Road.
Go ahead, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. I received something from the lawyer, or Rodeck Homes Incorporated, that says that the variance requested was 14 feet.
Correct.
From what is allowed, yes.
So the, the, the rule in the books is 60-foot setback. Supposed to be setback 60 feet. However, all the existing homes are about 46 feet. So what they're doing is, which Mr. Graviano explained, that's why he said all the different numbers, this house, this, they're all about 46 feet. So basically, they're keeping it in line with all the houses. But that's 14 feet in variance of the law, but the law allows the averaging. So that's why, that's why you got that letter, and that's why they're before us.
One other question is, like every...
Chairman, can I just add that for the record?
Please. The, the, just, just so the resident is aware, the zoning ordinance allows the applicant to do that averaging.
So the applicant did provide the setback studies for the neighboring dwellings to come up with that setback, that is conformance, in conformance with the zoning ordinance.
So how, how far back to the golf course is that, is that going to be going? I mean, what, this is the size of the, the actual structure. I mean, my house, my house is 30 by 40 feet.
All right, so, so to put that in context, the, the municipality requires the applicant to have a rear yard setback of 50 feet. The applicant has a rear yard setback of 80 feet. So the applicant has a rear yard setback 30 feet greater than what's required by ordinance.
Okay. Better get a lawn mower. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Well, maybe the gentleman on the board.
Oh?
Yeah, I just came to leave.
11 o'clock, that's it, you can't go home.
You're not allowed to leave. You can go home, but you can't stay here.
Despite the fact that whoever lives in this house may need a lawnmower, it's, I would like to ask the board to grant the variances. I think that we have shown, first of all, I had, as you know, I had to let her know what the difference is between what the ordinance are, and that's why I think we had the issue about the 14 feet. The criteria, as testified by Mr. Graviano, shows how this, this can be, it can be built and it can, without any violation to the, the nature and extent of your regulations. I think that what you're looking at here, especially in this area of Livingston with the golf course, this is in the middle of what basically is being rebuilt in that area. And I, I would ask that the board grant the variance, as we have met all of the statutory requirements. I appreciate your time and effort of staying here late, and we have one more. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board want to make any statements? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a statement.
Oh, statements, are you?
Okay.
You didn't want to express anything?
So thank you very much. I just want to express some of my concerns, okay? So the property is 15,441 square feet, so it's really in line with the R3 zone, not really an R2 zone. So we're applying the numbers from the R2 zone to an R3 actual size. And that's where I have a little bit of a problem, because even in an R3 zone, the size, house that you would build is 3,220 feet, so we're even exceeding that. To me, this seems like a very large house. So while we're looking at the 4,870 square foot recommendation, that's really for a 25,000 square foot lot. And this is 10,000 square feet less than what the R2 size is. So I'm having a little bit of a problem looking at this, because I'm looking at more as a, as an R3 size.
I got to understand your concern, however, and, and yes, you could say I can compare. But when you look at the testimony of Mr. Graviano, and you look at what has been developed here, and you look at the ones that are right across the, the way here, this size is still 700 and some odd square feet less than what could be allowed by ordinance. So I do, I, I do appreciate your concern. I think also, though, one of the things you have to look at here, as Mr. Graviano testified to, is the fact that this is one of the few areas, because now I've done quite a few in front of you, and I've driven all over in every one of the different zones. This is the one area where you have that extra open space, that golf course, that makes, makes it even more in terms of the aesthetics, which, you know, you see variances. So I do appreciate your concern, but I do believe we still have met the statutory requirement for the granting of the approval. But I do appreciate your comments, because they've always been pretty, pretty succinct, and I can appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to make any comments?
Oh, I'll throw it out there. I, I also concur with Lori. It is excessive for the lot. The, this whole area is, even though it's in an R2 zone, I mean, the whole area is not R2-sized lots. It is, just even looking at the R3, basically, your, your, what would be allowed technically, without a variance, would be 20, 2,779 square feet. You're looking at a difference of 1388. Even if you divided that in half, you're coming up with around the same 3,500 square feet of an R3, which is still in excess of the ratio by far. I mean, it's, it's, I get that you're under the, the max habitable floor area, but you're still far exceeding the ratio, and you can't, I don't know, can it, can't, it's just very oversized for the lot.
I too concur with both my peers here.
I have the same comment.
Want to take a second?
Yes.
Yes. I saw the white smoke, so the conclave is over.
The pope hasn't been nominated. We can, we can modify the size of the variance, I could make a recommendation, or I can have a redraw and come back.
Ms. Barbo, I think for belts and suspenders purposes, I think it would make the most sense to adjourn it to the June eleventh date, and you can, you know, as they used to say in the old days, sharpen the pencil?
Yep.
Nobody uses pencil anymore, and then you obviously, I don't have to tell you, you obviously have heard Catherine before about the timing to get it in and have it reviewed.
We'd have to do, we'd have to present it back to zoning.
Right. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we lost two already today, well, the other one might be quick.
So, the only, the only other way would be to me to, to just tell you that we would redraw the property to six percent instead of eight point nine.
I think, I think the board is probably-
Okay. I just wanted to let, I just wanted to throw that fish out there, see if it swam.
What do you think, Catherine?
I don't have the, my calendar here, the board is, we have a lot of applications pending.
Which is why we're here today.
Yes.
Is my other one going to be on that day?
I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
But then there's a question about notice.
Okay, so, okay, so-
If we do that, have to re-notice then.
Right, and I don't, I don't, yeah, we're trying to avoid that.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Hold on, let me think a second.
June eleventh to Wednesday, we have a Wednesday meeting?
Yeah.
This is a special.
We're a special, that one got moved because people want to-
It's on the Tuesday.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep you sharp. He's earning his pay today, I got him up and running around, too.
Are you still having to play fourths?
No.
Oh, no.
I won't be available, Jackie's not, it's just, you know, which is awesome, and then if one or two people are out-
It doesn't trust me to run the meeting.
I do, I do. Wow. Erase that.
Wow, that's terrible.
That's tough, tough call. That's all good, it's all good.
Well, women always run a better meeting than a man anyhow, so, I mean, uh-
So, just in case she is here, you want to get, you're getting good.
That's what my wife tells me. Yeah, you mean, we wouldn't have Adirondack for us, Frost, and then Miami? This is insane, it's like walking a dog at twenty-eight degrees. That's why I'm standing, because I had to, I had to dig a hole and put the, I bought a brand-new tree, and the, the guy said, "You better put it in the ground, or it's going to die," I said, "Why?" He said, "Oh, it's going to be twenty-two degrees," sure enough, it was twenty-something degrees. Got to, got to put wrap it with a blanket and, and pillow, are you kidding me? Twenty-something degrees. But then two days later, now it's going to be eighty. Makes you crazy. Well, Saturday is supposed to snow in the Adirondacks.
So, here's, here's, here's what we're going to do.
Go ahead.
We're going to rel-, follow along, this is good stuff, we're going to relist this the next hearing date is for May twenty-nine. However, we may not have the ability to hear you on May twenty-nine, so you may have to be here on May twenty-nine to ask for a new date at that point, at which point we will probably be better to know when the next hearing date may be, this way you'll avoid having to re-notice.
Okay.
So, the notice tonight for my friends who left, they left, they, before it got good.
They were happy with the answers.
They still want fourteen feet.
So, so for- So, for the- So, for the-
That's why I was trying to just cut it to a six percent.
So, so for the record, this matter is going to be relisted for May twenty-nine. No new notice is needed, and then, Ms. Barbo, we'll see you one way or another on the May twenty-nine.
Very good, all right, well, there's, just so you get, you already got an idea we're going to try, what we're going to try to cut out, so we make, make you a better presentation. Thank you.
Okay, block eleven oh-two, lot five, I'm the, I'm the next one. Eleven Hawthorne Drive. Application number-
I have neighbors in the back for a reading.
Twenty-twenty-five dash nineteen dash three, Rojack Home Incorporated, applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family residence in violation of the following section. One seven zero dash ninety-nine C-two, front yard setback forty feet required, thirty-six feet proposed, four feet variance requested. One seven zero eighty-seven C-C four, habitable floor air, floor ratio thirty percent allowed, thirty-five point nine eight proposed, five point nine eight percent variance requested.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'd like to present Amon Sadra, Architect.
All right, previously sworn.
And Amon, since the last application, your, your license is still in good stead-
Correct.
-from an hour ago, correct?
Correct.
Could you please tell the board-
We can accept him as an expert, let's put it on the record.
Could you please go over the, this particular house and your renderings of what you have presented here, please, thank you.
Sure, this is a colonial-style home, the first floor, as you see on the right side, has an area of one thousand five hundred fifty-six and consists of the living spaces, we have a guest bedroom on this level with its own bathroom and closet, we have two-car garage, to the lift of that, we have the basement, it's one big rec room in the basement, a small office, mechanical room, and we have a bedroom in the basement as well. The second floor consists of four bedrooms with its own bathrooms and closets, we have a laundry room, we have a two-story open foyer, which the area for this open space is about fifty-six square feet, counted twice, but only used once, the attic is only accessible with pull-down stair from the hallway at the second floor, the area for, the livable area for the second floor is one thousand five hundred and eighty-four, we have a total of floor area ratio of three thousand one hundred and forty, and that's below the habitable floor area that's known for this town, which is three thousand, three thousand two hundred and twenty. So, I'm going to go over, this exhibit is new.
Okay, A-one.
This is, as you see, it's a colonial-style home with white facades, we have a board and batten at the top, we have lap siding at the bottom, we have some stone at the base, dark windows, dark roofs, and that's kind of like everything.
Mr. Chairman, I submit Mr. Sadra for questioning from the board.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
I do. So, does this override the drawings that we have already previously submitted, because there's, there appears to be a big difference between that drawing there and what we have in front of us, this whole piece particularly?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
I've been trying to reconcile that picture, because, I'll tell you-
This is the one that you, which you have.
Yes.
That's the front.
So, if you go back to the color rendering for a second? That's what I was just trying to figure out. I think, because it's-
We're not seeing that-
I can't, that key's on the side, I don't see, that's where the-
Yeah, because of the angle of the house.
But that's back.
Yeah, it's set back, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for this witness? I don't, if you said it or not, the attic space is pulled down, not usable?
Yes, exactly, the attic is pulled down, and the attic height also, from the attic floor to the underside of the ridge, is eight, eight foot nine and a half, and that will require a color tie at six feet, so just a shallow space up there.
Short people only.
Yeah.
Virtually challenged.
But the attic, the attic is the third floor where those windows are, and the-
Yeah, this is just for statics, it's not, this is over built dormer, it's built on the face of the-
On the, on the roof, okay.
Roof, just to give a look, but it's not transparent to the inside.
Thank you. Any other questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness?
I guess I must have answered all their questions already.
Oh, maybe they'll have more for the next witness, we'll see, they're holding out, okay, hands up.
Mr. Graziano.
Graviano.
Graviano.
Don't, don't, don't-
He never worked with you before?
Ms. Barbo, don't worry about it.
Don't worry, I've been battling that for forty-eight years, so-
Yeah, you know, Ms. Barbo, don't worry, because he's already talked to the bank, and they accept checks both as Graviano and Graziano. No comment.
I'm not cut out for time, so, no.
Do you swear for the truth for this zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Graviano's qualifications as a planner have been placed on the record, and he hasn't gotten any dings on his phone, and he's still qualified?
Yes, sir.
So, we can accept you as a expert in planning.
So, with this application, the applicant's requesting the habitable floor area ratio variance, the applicant's requesting thirty-five point nine eight percent, where thirty percent is required, that's in relation to a specific piece of property known as block eleven zero two, lot five, the lot contains eight thousand seven hundred twenty-six square feet, it is an undersized lot for the zone, the R-four zone requires nine thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet, so the applicant has ninety-three percent of the required lot area, however, the requested habitable floor area ratio variance is at five point nine eight percent, so the floor area ratio request is in flow with the lot size that's existing on the site today, the applicant with this application as well is requesting the front yard setback averaging, the average of the lots for comparison are thirty-five point seven three, the applicant is at thirty-six feet, whereas thirty-five point nine nine exists today, so the front yard setback that exists today will be carried forward to the new house, that relief certainly can be granted under both the C-one and C-two criteria, with respect to the habitable floor area ratio variance, I would like to note that the applicant's eighty square feet under the habitable floor area, this house is a pretty modest house at three thousand one hundred and forty square feet, this lot can certainly accommodate the increased FAR, the applicant is meeting all required setbacks as well as providing the stormwater management drainage system on-site, the proposal certainly advances purposes of A, G, and I of the municipal land use law without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
With Nick's testimony, Mr. Chair.
Easy for you to say.
At, at five minutes to ten, I can't, I can't, names are a little messed up.
That's, that's quite all right, has anybody on this board have any questions for this witness? There being no one in the public, I don't think there's a question from them.
Oh, they left.
Yeah, they chased them away, would you like to make any closing statements?
Well, I think that basically, it's very simple, you've heard throughout the night what, what the criteria is to meet the floor area ratio, this certainly does, I believe that with the testimony of our experts, this is an appropriate application, the, the neighbors were here, we showed everything to them, and I decided they left, so obviously, they must be happy, we hope that you're happy with this, that this shows that this house is a, is a, meets the criteria of the municipal land use law, it meets the criteria for a floor area ratio, it shows that this could eas- easily be built on this particular site, and that it is in keeping with the neighborhood, it is part, a parcel of the redevelopment of Livingston, and if Livingston keeps on getting in the top ten of New Jersey with all of the real estate notifications, you're probably going to be busier and busier, so on all of those criterias, because we have given you legal justification and planning justification for the C variances, particularly to FAR, I'd ask that you approve this application, and thank you for staying so late on a special meeting.
Thank you, does anybody on the board have any statements to make? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
To approve.
Well, yeah, that would be, sorry, yeah. You thought the motion was to adjourn, so, yeah, really, at this point.
That's coming soon.
I will second his motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya, yes, okay, Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries, have a good night.
Have a wonderful tax season.
Yes, season pays off to everyone who's celebrating and happy Easter.
I get to celebrate both, I'm three percent.
Okay.
You all get one board of morsel, then.
Totally about the morsel soup.
I make a really mean morsel.
Ah, okay, there you go. Uh, motion to adjourn? Anybody, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Good. Second.